All right, so for, we have Patty who is missing, she's working out in the polls. Joe, by any chance, is he on the Zoom call?
Yes.
And Joe's on the Zoom call, so everybody else is here.
How did you get here?
I got here quick, man. I went and voted and got here quick. All right, so we're gonna move on to, we call it, executive session announcement. We did have an executive session right after last meeting, so we're gonna move on now to public comment. I'm hearing a feedback. All right, now we're good. All right, we're gonna move on to public comment. Do we have any public comment here tonight? I don't have any slips. Do we have any public comment online?
We do not.
All right, so now we're gonna move on to our presentation.
At this time, I'd like to invite Lower Elementary Principal Terry Kohler to the microphone to introduce her team.
Thank you, Dr. Finnerty. Good evening, everybody. So this evening, we have a presentation by some of our student leaders at Lower Pots Grove. They're gonna share with you what it means to be a student leader, how you get to become a student leader, and then they're gonna share about our Unity Day, which we had in October 19th, which was a big event for our student leaders, and they're gonna tell you all about that. So we have some of our student leaders and Mrs. Flanagan, our guidance counselor here this evening, so at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to the students.
Hello, my name is Karina Ford. We are here tonight to talk about the Lower Pots Grove Elementary School Leadership Team. There are 25 5th grade students on our team. In the spring of 4th grade, we filled out an application to show our interest in becoming a student leader. We also participated in an interview with our principal, Ms. Kohler, and the student leadership advisors, Ms. Flanagan, Mr. Bell, Ms. Godenas, and Ms. Schaefer. From this process, we were selected.
Hello, my name is Landry Hess. Here are a few of the responsibilities we have as student leaders. We create spirit days for our school. My favorite day so far is Falcon Spirit Day. On the first Friday of each month, we all wear maroon and white. I'm looking forward to our week-long spirit days in the holidays. Our leaders say the morning announcements on the loud speaker. Each of us is assigned to a 3rd and 4th grade buddy class. We meet with them and share important news. Student leaders also help to organize food and donation drives. During the week of November 14th, we are collecting donations for Operation 143. In December, we will be having a PJ collection for the Plaid Pajama Project. When new students come to Lower Pots Grove, we help them tour the building.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Sellers. One of our recent events for Unity Day, on October 19th, 2022, students at Lower Pots Grove celebrated Unity Day. We all wore orange, participated in several activities. Unity Day is recognized across the country during October, which is also Bully Prevention Month. It has been recognized in United States since 2011. The idea behind Unity Day is for us to unite kindness, acceptance, inclusion, and stand up against bullying.
Hi, my name is Haley Andrews, and I'm going to be talking about kindness. Kindness is being generous and considerate to people, not just because you have to, but because the simple act of kindness can lift someone up. And one quote that I feel really summarizes the impact of kindness is kindness is giving hope to those that think they're all alone in the world. And then here's a display in our school to remind us that we should always be kind, not just on Unity Day.
Hi, my name is Greenlee Pierce. Acceptance is allowing others to be a part of my school day. Acceptance is allowing others to come and... Acceptance is... How I show acceptance is I ask others to come and play with me at recess. I also ask what type of games they would like to play. To invite others into big or small groups, regardless of their differences or how they look.
Hello, my name is Brock Nichols, and today... Oh, wait, um, so, like what Stephanie said about Unity Day, we do celebrate Unity Day because of not to bully others. If you are a friend or is being bullied, you should tell a adult you trust, and we stand against bullying. Our school has daily second step lessons to learn and how to be kind and to show empathy.
Hello, my name is Kyla Champion. Student leaders created lessons for our classrooms and buddy classes. We taught all students about kindness, acceptance, and inclusion. The pledge. During our lesson, each student signed a pledge. The pledge is, "I will speak up when I see bullying. I will reach out to others who are being bullied. I will be a friend whenever I see bullying." Today, we are all wearing our pledge stickers to show that every student received to show we all stand up to being kind.
Hi, I'm Alicia Massacoy. All students at Lower Pots Grove completed an orange link for our kindness chain. On the links, we wrote ways how we can, how we showed kindness, and how we can show kindness to others. Student leaders connected each link to create a chain. These are a few pictures of us creating our kindness chain. It is on display in the middle hallway of our school. Thank you for letting us be here tonight. We are excited to let you know about all of the amazing things happening at Lower Pots Grove.
That was awesome. Could we get you to come up here and get a group picture? Thank you. I sure hope so.
Mrs. Kohler, I was gonna ask the same thing, if they were all planning on buying to sit there one day.
And a perfect segue, we're gonna move on to the student board report.
Hello, everyone. The past two weeks at Pots Grove High School have been full of celebration. Two weeks ago, Spanish club and participation with the Spanish classes set up an event in the library to the celebration of Dia de los Muertos, or Day of the Dead. Students were encouraged to learn about different traditions throughout the holiday, view an ofrenda, and try some Spanish hot chocolate, all of which are some traditional Mexican traditions. Monday and Tuesday, we filled with hunts as students were encouraged to find mariposas or butterflies, and calveras, also known as skulls, hidden throughout the school. Spanish candies were sold at lunch on Wednesday, including chupachups, which are lollipops, and sugar skulls. Students had fun with all the activities and had fun learning about Hispanic and Mexican culture. Now turn it over to Lilly to find out more about the school activities.
As our fall sports come to an end, we would like to congratulate our football team on their great season. In addition to them, we would like to commend our school's marching band for winning all of their competitions so far, and we hope they continue on their winning streak. Good luck to everyone. Also, there will be a winter fest in the Pots Grove High School cafeteria on December 10th at 10:00 a.m. for any kids who love games, arts, and crafts. Lastly, we have continued to make progress with our Help Women Period group to install feminine products into the school bathrooms and have almost officially established as a club. Thank you, everyone.
Another question. So this past week, we've also had the re-establishment of student-led announcements on our TV network. Isn't that true?
Yeah, I like the video announcements. They're fun.
And we have Mr. Hori in the audience, who is the kind of force behind it. So we have, what, two? We've done it two days now?
Yeah.
Okay, fantastic. I start my morning with it, okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much, ladies. Do we have any questions for the student reps? All right, thank you. We're gonna move on to the report of the superintendent.
Thank you, sir. I have four items tonight. Today was a day of professional development. Our staff spent the entire day learning. Yes, that's what we do when the students are home. We learn together. All teachers received their first training on our data dashboard at Insight. Elementary teachers worked on text-dependent analysis, which includes valuable skills of reading comprehension, analysis, verbal-written response. Our middle school staff worked on teaching strategies for the block and condensed periods, as well as multi-tiered systems of supports, which is critical. It is giving students what they need. Our high school staff worked on assessment literacies, which are important strategies that support growth of students' critical thinking skills. There were also a number of breakout sessions from which our staff could select based upon their individual needs. Second item is our Lunch and Learn Job Fair. Our Human Resources Department, led by Ms. Amy Thompson, is hosting yet another job fair, but this time with a twist. On Thursday, November 17th, we'll be hosting a Lunch and Learn Job Fair. Interested individuals can join us to discuss opportunities in the district over lunch. Please check out our website and social media for additional details. As our student leaders mentioned, next week is Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. So on November 12th through 20th, we'll be running a number of events and activities to raise awareness with regards to community members who are experiencing housing and food insecurity. Among the activities planned are drives to collect donations of personal care items, as well as food items. And last but not least, positive behavior intervention and support. All three of our elementary schools, Ringing Rocks West Pots Grove and Lower Pots Grove, will be recognized by the Pennsylvania Positive Behavior Support Network later this month at the 2022 PAPBS Implementers Forum in Hershey. PBIS is a research-based program to support student behavior and academic growth. It is one of our district goals to continue to develop our program and expand to the secondary level. So congratulations to all three of our elementary schools. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you. We're gonna move on to the approval of the minutes. I need a motion to approve. Someone has to make a motion. I have a motion and a second to approve 7.1 and 7.2. Do I have any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We're gonna move on to Mr. Linky taking care of the receiving of accounts, granting of orders, and treasury report with Patty working the polls tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Linky. Need a motion to approve the high school, middle school, and cafeteria accounts as presented.
I have a motion and a second to approve the receiving of the accounts for the audit. Anybody have any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Move on to granting of the orders.
Look for a motion to approve the payment of invoices in the amount of $4,711,784.83 for October 2022 as presented.
I have a motion and a second to approve the granting of the orders. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Move on to treasury report.
Need a motion to approve the treasurer's report for October 2022 and file it for audit.
I move, we approve the treasury report for October.
I have a motion and a second to approve the treasury report for October. Do we have any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We move on to action items personnel. I have a motion and a second to approve 11.1 through 11.10. Do we have any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Move on to 11.11. I have a motion and a second to approve the 11.11, approval of the Act 93 Administrator's Compensation Plan. Does anybody have any comments or questions? All right, we'll just make sure we understand exactly what it is, so we can explain that to the public, please.
So the...
No, you can just tell them what it is.
The Act 93 agreement is an agreement between the district and our administrative team. There are a number of administrative positions. It essentially encapsulates all of the administrative team who are not on individual contacts, such as myself.
I do wanna thank Jay, and unfortunately Patty's not here, for the work involved with doing the negotiations for the Act 93. They spent a lot of hours, and everything worked out very well for both the district and the administrators, so thank you very much. Unless Jay has any other comments he'd like to make, we're good. All right, we're gonna move on to action items, 12.1. Oh, we need a vote, sorry. Roll that back. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, we'll go to 12.1. I have a motion and a second to approve all action items on business, 12.1 through 12.6. Does anybody have any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass. Move on to action items 13.1.
I make a motion that we approve action items 13.1 through 13.5.
Motion and a second to approve all action items under education. Do we have any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Move on to action items 14, policies. I have a motion and a second to approve 14.1, approval of the new policies. Any comments or question on these? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Move on to the Joint Operating Committee.
The Western Center Joint Operating Committee met last night, and there are three things to give an update on. An Act 93 plan, comprehensive plan, and the salon at the Western Center. Act 93, the Western Center has not had an Act 93 plan. There are just currently two administrators that would fall within that plan. It's their principal and their facility manager. The next steps we agreed to at the JOC meeting is that the Personnel Committee for the JOC, which is three people, one from each of the sending districts, are setting up meet-and-discuss sessions with Principal Mark Holzman to begin discussions to lead to a development of an Act 93 plan. Comprehensive plan, we got a review last night of the final draft of the comprehensive plan for the Western Center. That needs to be completed by November 30th of this year. The purpose of the plan is to review and analyze the strengths and the weaknesses of the Western Center in order to set goals and provide a focus for continuous improvement of the center operations for the next three years. There are four main focus areas in the Western Center's comprehensive plan. They are, first, to increase co-op opportunities, they call them work-based learning, by 10% per year for each of the next three years. Very much believe that not only what they teach is important, but getting people to apply that knowledge in the real world and in work really makes a significant difference, so they wanna push improvements in just the number of students that have co-op opportunities. Second is to continually maintain and improve the facilities and the equipment that are there. It's important that students learn on new equipment or current equipment that is similar to the equipment that they would be using in the real world when they go to a job. So they wanna get a plan in place to do maintenance and improvement in equipment. Third is to develop and implement a plan to get more students into the Western Center. They are at capacity in many of their programs, and the wait lists are increasing. There's an increasing number of students from each of the sending districts that would like to attend there. This involves looking at enrollment projections for the next three to five years, looking at space constraints, facility constraints, looking at faculty needs if things would be increased, and what I found interesting is examining their curriculum model. They have three-year programs and four-year programs, and there are two different models. They could use either a grade-level model, which right now they do, if you're in 9th or 10th, you go in the AM, and if you're in 11th and 12th, you go in the PM. They're beginning to question that and say, what impact would it have if you changed that model in terms of number of students you could take? The reason is this, sometimes you don't know at 9th grade you wanna get involved in a program. So they take not only people who could complete a four-year program, but also if an 11th grader wakes up suddenly and says, you know, I'm interested in welding, we don't wanna say no to students just because, well, you should've decided that when you were in 9th grade, you know, it's too late. But if they decided 11th grade and they get in, they would be put in the PM group with the 11th graders, because they use a grade-level model, but they'd be in the first year of the program, which is really 9th grade, which causes an interesting problem for teachers, because now you have a class of 11th and 12th graders, some are third-year students, some are fourth-year students, but there's also first and second-year students. The question then becomes, what would that model change? What impact would that have on the sending districts and curriculum at the districts? So it was really an interesting discussion. It's going to take several months, if not longer, to figure out what those changes would make, but they're looking at it all in context of how can we increase the number of students who have an opportunity to go there. So there's a lot of thinking, and to my knowledge, they're involving the superintendents in those discussions that those things are going on. And then lastly, the fourth thing that was looked at with the comprehensive plan is to improve their processes for helping students get job interviews. They think they could do a better job with that, not only the co-op opportunities, which is while they're in school, but once they graduate, how can we increase the number of job interviews or opportunities that kids get and really increase placement, which is jobs in the world? So that was the comprehensive plan piece, which is ready to be submitted, as I said, by November 30th. And then lastly, we heard a presentation from the cosmetology instructors, Mrs. Angela Reichert and Mrs. Jenny King. Not only are they teaching cosmetology, but they've put a student-run business, what they call the salon, into the Western Center. So now you have, if you've... So now you have, if you picture this, you have a classroom going on, but at the same time, there's a real business that the students are running. You can call up and get appointments for your hair, for skincare, or for nails, and it's, it's online with a phone number that you can call. So now the students are not only learning the skills in, in cosmetology, but they're also picking up business management skills, like making appointments and telephone etiquette, handling questions and concerns, customer relations, working together in profit and loss management. So it, it's business-running skills in the cosmetology area. You can get more information on the Western Center website, westerncenter.org, for those of you who want to go and get a haircut, or get some skincare, or, or get your nails done. Recently, the two instructors, Mrs. Reichert and Mrs. King, presented their student-run business concept at the Pennsylvania Association of Career and Technical Administrators. This whole education business is filled with acronyms that you were mentioning before. So that's called PACTA or PACTA, at their Integrated Learning Conference, which is called ILC. So it was the PACTA ILC, really well-received with the concept, the business concept. So not only, again, not only are they teaching it, but they're building a business in the classroom. So don't know if Mrs. Reichert or Mrs. King are online, but it's a shout-out to them for the, the creative and the, the excellent work that they're doing. And if they're not online and anybody knows Mrs. Reichert and Mrs. King, please let them know we talked about them tonight and, and shared the work that they're doing, not only in teaching cosmetology, but applying it in, in a business sense, which really makes a difference. So that's the update, the basic stuff that went over at JOC last night.
Thank you. Anybody have any comments or questions for?
Yeah, Jay, how is this salon any different than the salon they've been running there for years?
Don't know exactly. It's, it's a nice question to ask. I don't know if the services are different, if the operating hours are different. I don't know, because I'm not familiar with it from the past years.
Okay, I was just curious. I mean, I used to get my hair done there when I was in kindergarten. So that's how long it's been, been going on.
Don't know. They talked about it as if there is newer stuff going on. It's the first I had heard about it. I haven't gotten my hair cut there. But it'd be an interesting question to take back and ask, what changes have they made since they started doing that?
Maybe they added in the students being more involved in the business end, which is fantastic.
Yeah, I don't know. It's a, it's a good question, actually, and I, I...
You know, knew about it.
Sorry, I don't, I don't know. I didn't ask.
Any other questions? All right, well, thank you very much, Jack. We're gonna move on to the committee items. Item 16.1, minutes for operation.
Make a motion to approve action item 16.1 and 16.2.
I have a motion and a second to approve both 16.1 and 16.2 minutes for the two committees. Do we have any comments or questions on those? Hearing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. We're gonna move on to the policy committee report, please.
So again, I apologize. It's been a long week, so I did miss this. We discussed policy 227, which is controlled substances. And really, it's the idea that we have to update it, is, it's an old policy. And just really that, as well as the student discipline and substance policy. The substance policy and controlled substance, really, we were updating them, just bringing them more into current and, let's see, give me a moment here, I apologize again.
The PBSA.
Yes. PBSA is the one that had us, wanted us to update this, but then we also discussed just, like I said, updating, so there's not really much to...
Yeah, it was just simply updating the two policies to just get the wording more correct, more accurate.
And also having both jive together, so that they...
Correct. And we pieced them into the other policies because they all referred to another. So it was, that was simply just working on numbers and working on letters. Anybody have any comments or questions? Hearing none, thank you, Jim. Move on to the next. Move on, oh, that's it, new business. All right, do we have any new business? Dr. Finney?
Two pieces of new business. The first is, we did get the first batch of student achievement data from last year. It's still not yet publicly available, but our, our first look at it, the data looked really great, so we're looking forward to when that's released, and we can break it down a little more and share that out with our public. Wow, I said I had two, and I maybe I only have one, because I'm forgetting the other one. It's been a long week, Jim.
And it's only Tuesday! Tina?
Yeah, I also want to extend an apology because I had not been using the microphone throughout the night to make motions, so sorry in advance for that. But I always like to come back to Lilly and Emily and just ask if there's anything you'd like to share about school as part of the new business.
Right now, I think we're already for Thanksgiving break, not gonna lie. But, so today was actually very nice, but, so not right now, but hopefully when we come back, there'll be something newsworthy, but, yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, we're already missing the football games, so sad that's over, but they had a good season, and I'm excited for fall ball, so.
You remembered? Back to Dr. Finney.
Thank you. So today, earlier today, we released our parent survey. Released a blog that kind of explained the importance of our parent survey. We are very interested in how our parents are feeling, and we take that feedback to heart. If you do get a chance to read the blog, I mentioned a number of ways that we've actually used that feedback to shape what we're doing. We're going to really reach out to parents and try to give everybody an opportunity to be heard, so please look forward to that, and please do take the time, fewer than five minutes, to share your feedback with us. So thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna move on to Jack.
Mr. Voorhees and Mr. Dr. Gonzalez are in the audience. I think, wanted to thank both of them from Patty and me. They represented the Act 93 group as we worked on the Act 93 plan, and thank you for your thoughtfulness, your open-mindedness, and your collaborative nature, I guess, in, in meeting with, with the members of the board that you did, and discussing the new plan that we put together. So I thank you very much for the time you took and, and for that, just the thoughtfulness of the meetings. Thank you.
Ladies, normally I go to you, but you guys already went, so I'm gonna, unless you have something new. Okay, we're gonna move around Dr. Nippert.
And I remember to turn it on. Yeah, I just have one comment, just a shout-out to Ron Linkay and Yvette Green for her, for information. Yvette Young, I'm sorry. It's been a long day, and I knew, I knew someone named Yvette Green many years ago, so I apologize in advance for what's gonna be a many-repeated mistake. Anyway, for their information on West Pots Grove Elementary School, the roofing project, which is one of many problems associated with West Pa, West Pots Grove, and they gave a very interesting report, something that's going to come before this board, is overhaul to, to that building, and I think they've done an excellent start, and I encourage, well, I encourage us all to give a thought about what we're gonna have to do, the project estimate, I don't know if this is public... It's public?
It's our committee.
Close to 3 million. So anyway, this is gonna be a large expenditure, which we're going to have to think about. So thank, thank you, and thank you, Yvette Young, and I'm sorry that it be a bearer of bad news of large expenses coming down the road. Thank you.
You got it. And Jim? Ashley?
Are those cupcakes for us?
We got cupcakes? Oh, man, I need to see the cupcakes! Good job, good call.
I can smell them from a mile away, though.
Anything else? Ashley, Ashley, anything else? All right, I had two, two quick items. First one, on the approval tonight, as I'm gonna repeat what I said last week, there was a resolution that we will not go above the Act 1 index. Again, the Act 1 index is a generalized number, it's 5.1%. When you see that on the media, we are not gonna get anywhere near that. I just want to make sure the public understands, we are not gonna get the 5.1%, nowhere near it. Second thing, and I kind of blame myself on this one, because I was part of the vote that did this tonight, as you can see, there is no one here from the audience. Wonder why? It's election day. Why in the world did we approve a board meeting on election night? I would recommend, we do not do that, obviously, next year, since half of you guys are gonna be running, and in the future, it's just not a good night to have a board meeting. So hopefully, we are cognizant about that when our calendar comes back out for next year. Other than that, thank you very much for everybody that voted tonight. Okay, lastly, we're gonna move on to public comment. Do we have any public comment online? Because there's no one here. No. All right, then I'm gonna approve a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Motion approved. Anybody, all approved? We're out of here.